A few minutes. Starting. Okay, good morning, everybody. If we could, please stand for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands slanting on our God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to let it be known that all the commissioners are present this morning. And are there going to be any agenda changes today?
There are no changes.
Okay, and so now we will move to the public comment period for anybody that has anything to say for items that are not on the agenda. Seeing nobody go to the mic, I will close public comment and we'll go to the consent agenda for the approval of minutes for October 25th. Does the commissioner have any changes?
I have one suggestion. On page three of the minutes, right about in the middle of the paragraph that's labeled "Motion," the line starting designation by amending, I put the term "general plan" in right before land use, because otherwise we don't have anything in there specifically indicating that we're changing the general plan. Did I?
No.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Wooster.
Yes, on the page two, under E1, the paragraph describing what was before us. The same sentence, well, not the same sentence, but partway down is a reference to contract number 354 for 3,256.78 acres. And the next sentence starts at 3,256.93 acre ranch, and then it goes on. I think the resolution settled on the figure of 3,256.93, which should probably be consistent in this paragraph.
I'm sorry. Okay, so when it's talking about the acreages, it references the 3256, 3,256 acres, then it says .78 on one spot and .93 on another.
Oh, I thought I corrected all that in the documents. Did it not reflect in the?
In the minutes.
Minutes, yes. That is an error, and you're right, it should be corrected.
.93 or .78?
I don't recall without it having, I don't have it before me.
I don't have, I can.
I think it might be the 93.
I think it is the 93.
I think it's the 93, yeah.
Okay.
I could go back and confirm through my other documents.
Okay, I have one other suggested change, which is a little bit more substance, and that's on page three under "Motion." It says, "A motion was made by Commissioner Wooster and seconded by Commissioner Latice to adopt resolution 2018.060 recommending the Board of Supervisors approve application 2018.032, et cetera." The application was for the 3,256.93 acres, but it wasn't approved.
Correct.
For 3,293.56 acres. It was approved for 3,172.72 acres.
Yes.
And so I think to be accurate, it should read, "A motion was made by Commissioner Wooster and seconded by Commissioner Latice to adopt resolution 2018.060 recommending, comma, with respect to 3,172.72 acres of land."
Okay.
"That the Board, et cetera."
Okay. I agree. Okay, is everybody good with those amended changes to the minutes?
I am.
Okay, all right. So all in favor or need a motion to?
I move that we approve the minutes as amended.
In a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Abstain?
Me.
Okay. And there were no noes. Okay. Okay. Moving on to the public hearing today, it's 2018-060, Appeal of ABC License, what, denial for the West Point General Dollar Store.
Okay, good morning, everyone. So the applicant, Mr. Steve Rawlings, with the alcoholic beverage specialist on behalf of the West Point, or specifically the Dollar General Corporation, filed an appeal of a staff decision to not authorize the issuance of a type 20 ABC license, which is off-sale beer and wine for the Dollar General store in West Point. Reason being, the issuance of that license is specific to census tract numbers. So census tract number four is currently about 180 square miles, ranging from the outskirts of McCollumie Hill up to West Point, spanning the countryside out to just about the west side of Highway four, so it's a pretty large area. Encumbers the communities of Glen Cobra Road Flat, Willseville, in addition to West Point. Currently, the state allows four licenses to be issued in census tract four, for which we have currently issued five. As a result, there is an over-concentration of licenses in census tract four. And state law basically says, with the, with concurrence from the local jurisdiction, the state will allow the issuance of an additional license in an over-concentration when findings of necessity or convenience can be made. And that's public convenience and necessity. So basically, our findings were based on the fact that currently there are three out of those five issued licenses are in West Point, within 650-foot radius of each other. In 2017, the applicant submitted an application and letter, basically requesting a letter of necessity and convenience for the issuance of a sixth license in that census tract. And our determination at that time was to not authorize the issuance of an additional license. That was based on the fact that there were already five licenses issued in that census tract, again, three of which were issued in the community of West Point itself. The issuance of an additional license would mean four licenses within that close proximity in that same town. Although the outer skirts of the area, I think we determined that there was one issued license in Railroad Flat and another one in Willseville, when you, when you take a look at land use in, in the communities in that census tract, we came to realize that there doesn't appear to be a lot of commercial development potential in those other areas. And our feeling was that if we're gonna, if we're gonna make a consideration of an additional license, perhaps maybe we should hold that consideration for a community that either doesn't have a license currently, or maybe has limited license, licenses. So for that reason, we didn't authorize the issuance of an additional license, and it just unfortunately happened to be for the Dollar General. So a letter was sent to the alcohol, to ABC, and it was copied to the applicant. Then in 2018, the applicant reached out and actually filed an application through the ABC and was told that, that the, of course, the planning department, local jurisdiction, would not authorize the issuance of an additional license and basically denied the application. So at that point, he, he filed a new application with the, with, he provided us with his application that he had submitted to the ABC, along with a letter outlining reasons why we should consider the license. And that was done in 2018. At that point, we felt it necessary to uphold our original determination, and the applicant filed the appeal, which obviously has brought the matter before you for consideration. So at this point, it's, it's basically up to the planning commission as to whether or not you think that those findings can be made, but the planning department has thus not authorized the issuance of that sixth license.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions for Gina?
Yeah.
Okay. To get oriented here, it's a given, isn't it, that there is an over-concentration of licenses in this census district?
Correct.
Correct.
And is it also the case that an additional license can issue?
Correct.
If the local governing body, or its designated subordinate body, determines that public convenience or necessity would be served by that license?
Yes.
Okay. And the local governor, governing body would be the Board of Supervisors?
Actually, the local governing body is the planning director in this case.
Well, the governing body is the Board of Supervisors. That authority has been delegated to the planning director, who I have subsequently delegated to my staff.
Okay, so that's the designated subordinate officer body. Now, the Business and Profession Code doesn't say anything about appeals, so.
Doesn't say anything about what?
Appeals from a determination by the planning department. And the county has made the choice to have a designated subordinate body or officer. How do we know that this matter is properly before the planning commission? Because under the Business and Professions Code, it looks like it's either the Board of Supervisors or the local subordinate body or officer, period.
There's, there's a process in 1798 for any staff decision to be appealed, and I think that the planning department interpreted this as they're entitled to an appeal of a staff decision in the same way that any other applicant to anything would be.
Okay, I can understand that that's a fair reading, but I'm still a little bit concerned that the way the state law is written, it seems to put the, put the decision in the hands of either the Board, which this county chose not to do, chose to put it in the hands of the subordinate body or officer, and it doesn't say subject to appeals. But assuming this is properly before the commission. What is the scope of?
Can I build on, on that point before you get to the next? I, I agree with the viewpoint of Commissioner Wooster that, that we can't mix, it's hard to mix apples and oranges here. Either you're the designated officer or you're not. Because if you are the designated, if you're not the designated officer, and there, for all purposes, and there can be appeals from your decision, then I think we have a very tough question with the 90-day period that's provided in section 23958.4, which says that the, the, let's see. The, that designated subordinate officer or body has to determine within 90 days of notification of a completed application that public convenience or necessity would be served by the issuance. Presumably, you made that determination within the 90 days. But then it says, "The 90-day period shall commence upon receipt by the local governing body," which I assume would also mean, or the designated officer, if possible, "of notification of the department for, of an application for licensure or a completed application according to local requirements, if any, which is later." If we're saying that there has to be an appeal from the designated officer, the 90 days has long expired for the Board, the governing body of the area, to make its decision. So I, I share Commissioner Wooster's concern that the, if there's been a designation to you, that you are in the position of the governing body. The governing body has delegated that to you. Otherwise, we have a real problem with a 90-day period, and I don't see where, if we still have jurisdiction to be considering this issue, that, why that 90-day period hasn't expired a long time ago, and it isn't even to the governing body yet.
Well, there were two requests for determination.
Correct.
Right there, because he said he didn't get the first one?
Right, the second application was filed in?
August of this year.
The latter part of August?
No, it was '21.
It was denied on the 90th of September.
And is that a way that we can avoid the problems of the 90-day period if he just keeps filing applications? I just, I wonder if we have jurisdiction at all.
Well.
And besides, if you, if you've made the determination, that's great, but if the 90-day period applies to the local governing body, at best then, if you can just look at the second application as if the first one never happened, those 90 days is gonna be expiring, and what we can have. It, I think we've got a very confused situation here. Either you're the designated officer or you're not, and your decision is what they go back to the, to the ABC with. And I'm sorry if I interrupted your train of thought, but that was.
Well, no, you carried it a little further down the track. Well, I guess I can understand why the planning department would accept a second request for determination if the applicant had no idea that his first one had been denied.
Right.
I'm still a little concerned about the issue.
In addition, the second application provided us with additional information that wasn't provided in the original application.
I'm still a little concerned about the jurisdictional question, assuming you can work around the 90-day. And I guess maybe another question would be, if this commission were to entertain this appeal and grant it, could somebody else then take an appeal to the ABC and say the planning commission had no authority to overturn the decision of the subordinate body or officer and undo whatever determination that this commission might make to grant the appeal? And I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Nor do I.
Yeah, so, and I'm listening to Julie talk about 17.98, which would give the appeal process, so we've got some conflicting information here. I mean, Julie, do you think that we need to investigate this further before we take any actions?
I guess I'm, I guess I'm a little bit confused by some of the discussion. If the planning commission accepted that there was a second application filed in August and that the, and that the planning department made a decision within 90 days, what is the concern at that point about jurisdiction?
Well, if, if the planning department is the designated officer, there's no, there would be no problem. I think we have, we have the state enabling the county to designate an officer to make this decision. We're told that the county, the governing body has designated such an officer. That officer has made a decision within 90 days. The, I'd say the state statute trumps, I shouldn't use that word, the state statute governs over our local appeal thing, because if we, if we say, "Well, now you can appeal it to the planning commission, and then you can appeal it to the governing body," well, the governing body has said, "We're not the decision maker here. It's the planning director."
So the concern, the concern is you're loath to read a right of appeal into the scheme, is that what I'm hearing, you're loath to?
I don't know about loathe, but I, I think it's, I think it's contrary to the state statute.
The issue arises because of the phrase, "or its designated subordinate offer, officer or body" in the state statute. If the statute had just said, "The local governing body makes the determination," and that body had said, "Okay, we want a recommendation, okay, from the planning department and then from the planning commission before we make our decision," then it would be clear that we would have the ability to entertain this appeal, but that's not what it says. The state statute creates the issue by that phrase, "or its designated subordinate officer or body." And once you do the designation, the argument's there that under state law, that's it.
They are, they, you are the governing body. You're acting in place of the government, governing body.
But I don't see that as being any different than any of the other approving capabilities that have been delegated to me for administrative use permits or other, other planning, typical planning activities where, you know, it's, it's in state law, says that the governing body, but then it also provides for delegation of that to the commission or to, you know, the planning director, which we've done in some instances. I, I think that, and there we have a, an appeal process that allows a decision that I make that can be final to be appealed. That authority has been delegated to me or to the director, but there still is the appeal process so that ultimately, the member of the public who is applying for an application has sort of the right to go to the governing body, the elected officials from the jurisdiction, rather than saying, "That's it, no appeal process."
That's how, that's my reading, too.
I don't see it being any, any different than the, than the delegation authority in government code for typical land use and planning issues.
I, I had the same reading. I mean, I did, I saw it as two separate things. One is a decision was made, and then, second, there would be, then, okay, they've made their decision within 90 days, but locally, we provide people who have been subject to a staff decision with a local right of appeal. So again, I mean, that's how I legally read it. Obviously, it's up to you to determine the actual interpretation and resolution of the different statutory schemes. That was my reading of it at the time. Again, I'm not saying that it would be legally indefensible to come up with something else that's for you guys to, to decide.
Then what about the, the sentence in, in 23958.4 that says, "The 90-day period shall commence upon receipt by the local governing body of notification by the Department of an application for list licensure or be a completed application according to local requirements, if any, whichever is later." Now, I take it here, the second, the second application is what you think falls within that, that completed application according to local requirements?
Yes.
But the local government, the language of the local governing body, either, either that, for these purposes, the Board of Supervisors, or because it's designated a subordinate officer, the, the planning director, they certainly haven't designated the planning commission. And it just, it seems to me that this statute is set for, you know, this 90-days decision. I think if, if you can, if you think an appeal is appropriate, well, then it's the governing body that's gonna have to make the decision, final decision. But they've already designated it back to the, to the officer. It seems to me that we get into real problems with a 90-day period and making sure that that, it seems to me that the statute is clearly considering that the local, the county is going to make its decision within 90 days. And I know that we can get into problems that way. If you're saying that, "Oh, well, as long as the department made its decision within 90 days, then we can just keep going on with appeals and everything else," it does not seem to be consistent with the, with the intent of the statute.
Hey, I think my concern would be that, and I'm hearing what she's saying about the 17.98, I think that when we are giving total jurisdiction to one individual without an appeal process, that we have really violated some rights there for me. I, I understand the BMP, I understand what you're reading, I understand the 90-day process that you're talking about, I'm reading it also, but I also feel that we do have an appeal process set up within this county, and I would hate to be the one that wasn't allowed an appeal process, although it does state, too, that if we don't make a decision, then ABC can, without us.
And it could well be that the ABC's gonna be harder-nosed than we are. That's correct.
We can't make that determination?
No, no, we gotta see that.
I gotta say one or two words. I think maybe it's an ambiguous situation at best, or at worst, and the chair's comments, I think, are consistent with the way I'm looking at it. In Gina Cathan's letter of September 19th, the very last page of our packet, the last paragraph simply says, "Pursuant to," and I'll shorten it up a little bit, "Pursuant to 1798020, decision of planning staff member may be appealed by following the appeal procedure, submitting a request 15 calendar days." All that is done. I don't, I don't, I think, I think we're worrying too much about the procedure. If somebody wants to appeal it or go to ABC or whatever, that's fine. I think we have the jurisdiction, and we should go ahead.
And supporting your position, Commissioner Vachelli, the ABC can look at what we've done and, and say, "Well, they violated the statute. It was the planning director that had the jurisdiction all along," and make their own mind up on the basis of that. So, you know, we, it's questionable whether we have jurisdiction, but we can continue to make this decision, and the, it's gonna be, the final word on that will really be up to the ABC.
The final word's up to ABC anyway, correct? Yeah, yes.
Might be up to the Supreme, who knows?
Don't take us there. Okay, so you know what, I'd like to make a suggestion. I'd like to hear from the applicant and, and see what their thoughts are.
I have some questions for the county other than this.
Absolutely.
Your decision was not based at all on any doubts about the Dollar General being able to enforce the liquor laws of the state of California, et cetera. Your, your decision was solely based on the number of licenses that were around and the, the possible inability to, to grant any other licenses in other jurisdictions?
Correct.
It's not, it's not Dollar General-specific.
No, no, not at all.
And would this, would Dollar General, if it gets a license, would it be the licensee closest to the West Point School?
Yes. Out of the, out of the four total licenses in that, in that West Point area, the Dollar General would be the closest to the school, although I'm assuming that if there is some regulation regarding distance from schools, that the ABC would, would be recognizing that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking how it might enter into the public convenience or necessity test. Okay, that's on.
I do have more questions, but I think we should hear from the applicant.
I just wanted to follow up on that. Looking at the map, it looks like the West Point Market and the Dollar General are about equidistant to the school.
And they're all within a 650-foot radius of each other?
Yes, yes. Okay, so shall we go to the applicant? Okay. Would the applicant like to come up, please? Good morning.
Hey, good morning. How is everybody?
Great.
Thank you. My name is Steve Rawlings, and I am a consultant to Dollar General stores. I assist them with licenses and permits necessary to sell alcohol at their stores throughout the entire state of California. I've been working with them now for about, maybe it's six years now? I guess I started with, working with them in 2012. And I do have a bit of a presentation. I don't want to necessarily be redundant. You had a staff report that had a PowerPoint presentation that I normally give, but I would like to highlight a couple of things. And I, having been involved in this business for a long time, I have, I'm not a lawyer, but I do have a pretty good understanding of land use law and, and some of the ABC procedural things, and I'd like to touch on, on that just a little bit if it'd be a little. things, and I'd like to touch on, on that just a little bit, if it would be obliged. Also with me today is, is Mike Duberts, and he is actually the district manager for this particular store. He carries, he lives down in the Turlock area and, and covers this area up here too. And he is available for, you know, some questions, operational questions and some other, other things like that. But in terms of the, the discussion that we were having, I've, I've seen this in other municipalities, in every municipality, I understand you have your own codes and ordinances, but I've seen this exact same scenario where the state delegates to a county or a city, and then the city has the ability within itself to delegate whoever they would like. But I have seen every city have an appeal process, unless, of course, it's the Board of Supervisors, well, that's the end of it, or the City Council. And I, and I have seen the appeals go through and, and there has, I have not, I'm not aware of any challenges to the appeal process, but that's, that's, you know, neither here nor there, that's just anecdotal. Anyway, we did apply back in 2017, and we've applied at the same time we applied for our Valley Springs store. And it was an oversight on our part, we were not aware that the director had made a different determination on the West Point store. And this store was not open yet, and it was still under construction, so it was a complete oversight by, by our staff that, that there was a different decision than the Valley Springs store. So when this store came close to opening, we, we sat around the table and said, oh, wait a minute, the actual county made a different determination than what we had thought. So we went ahead and reapplied and asked for reconsideration. And we did bring forward some, some different points after our conversation, hour or two. I, I wrote a letter, a detailed letter, trying to articulate, you know, certain points that I thought would make the case for finding of public convenience or necessity. And I will emphasize the, the words that it's public convenience or necessity, it's not both. And the state gives a very, very broad, you know, findings. You know, there, there's nothing that says public means, oh, that's going to be, it's got to benefit at least 100 people. There's, there's no definitions like that. So they do give rather broad latitude for making the finding, or not making the finding. But I do, I do find that to be a point that sometimes people don't fully conceptualize that it's convenience or necessity. I would like to, to give a couple of anecdotal examples of convenience and why I think that this is publicly convenient, that we could, that Dollar General be able to sell alcohol. As you, I, I hope that every one of you has had an opportunity by now to shop at, at a Dollar General or not. They are, we are new to California since about six years ago. We have about, close to 200 stores open now, every one of our stores in California. We have asked for permission to be able to sell beer and wine. There's a few that we're not selling beer and wine because we're statutorily prohibited to. Some communities do have hard and fast rules that says, hey, if you're, you know, within X number of feet of a school, or a, you know, mental health facility, or things like that, and we happen to fall within those boundaries, so there was just no questions asked. So it is a standard product that we offer, and we offer it in almost every city. I brought with me a list that I'll, I'll save for the end, of all of the stores that we have licensed in the state of California, and I believe the number is 180-some-odd stores at this point, 181 stores as of the other day. So it's a standard product. Dollar General prides itself on being able to offer just about everything you could buy in a regular, larger format grocery store that we're all used to, the Safeways of the world, or the Rally's, or so on and so forth, that are much larger, 30,000, 40,000 square feet. Our typical stores run around 10,000 square feet, and in there, we're able to pack in a lot of products, 10,000 SKUs. No, you, there are, if you go to a regular grocery store, you'll find that there's 50 different types of tubes of toothpaste you could buy, and I'm not making that number up, because you got all the different manufacturers, Colgate, Pepsidin, AIM, you know, blah, 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 blah. And then you got, you know, Tartar Control, and you got Gel Flavor, and you got Kids Flavor, and Bubble Gum Flavor, blah, blah, blah. You're not going to find that at Dollar General, but you are going to find Colgate, you're going to find Pepsidin, you're going to find Crest, and we stock them, they're major sellers. So if you're really particular that you want Bubble Gum Flavor, Kids Size, we might not have that, but by golly, we do have all the national brands. And we're able to, that's why we're able to carry everything, because we don't have to dedicate as much sales space to each individual type of product, but you can go in there and you can buy toothpaste, and you can buy paper towels, and you can buy milk, and you can buy pasta, and pasta sauce, et cetera, et cetera. So we are a full-service type of grocery and consumer goods store. And from the reaction that we've gotten from the community in our West Point store, it was desperately needed for this particular community, a, a location in which you could do all of your shopping and find all of the products that you're, you know, consuming most of the time. Our simple request is that we be able to offer those customers a one-stop shopping experience. So someone, somebody's in there looking to buy that pasta, the pasta sauce, and all the other products that they buy, they would, that they would simply be able to buy one bottle of wine, to be able to take home to enjoy with dinner. And I would submit to you that it's highly inconvenient if you're going to a grocery store and you're buying everything and you want 12-pack of beer or a bottle of wine. Now you have to complete your shopping there at Dollar General, you got to load up your, your, your trunk, get in your car, drive to another location to simply make the purchase of one bottle of wine. And I would submit to you that that's extremely inconvenient. I have four sons, they're all really great kids, but when they were five through 14, they were rowdy boys. And, you know, the idea of taking two or three of them at a time to a grocery store sometimes was a little bit of a stressful experience, not that they were out of control, but boys are boys. And oftentimes, you're doing it right after you, after work. You've picked them up from whatever, the daycare that you're going to, you got to go home, you've got to go to the grocery store because you got to pick up something for dinner. People go to our store because they know that, hey, they're going to get good values, our pricing is, is, is very good, we're proud of that fact. And you can be in and out of there in 10 minutes. And if you're there and you want to buy all these things and you simply would like to have a bottle of wine, now you got to load those, those kids back up, everybody's a little tired, everybody's a little hungry, and we just simply got to go drive, you know, down to another place, to just simply get out of my car, and hopefully, nobody leaves their children in the car, but now you got to take your kids in with you, and simply go make a simple purchase of a bottle of wine. So I would say to you that it's extremely inconvenient if we're not able to do it. It does add convenience, because people are looking for places to do a one-stop shop. I know I am, I don't like to have to go to multiple places to buy, you know, the products that I'm looking for. And in terms of, you know, necessity, I think that there is a true necessity in society to be able to offer the public choices. We don't, we don't show up to a town and there's only one Mexican restaurant, or one Italian restaurant, you know, there, there's oftentimes, you know, multiple Mexican restaurants, multiple Italian restaurants there. And the government doesn't step in and say, no, 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 you know what, we only need one Mexican restaurant. The public and the consumers, you know, should be afforded the opportunity to make their own choices, and that they should be provided choices, and I would say that that is a true need. Competition is, is needed in our society to be able to establish, you know, the best, you know, best pricing, or, or the most convenience, and so on and so forth. So, you know, I do have, you know, some other points along those, but those are, you know, the basic, you know, concepts with this. Dollar General has 15,000, approximately 15,000 stores nationwide. We only have about 200 in, in the state of California. Trust me, if we all went back to Tennessee or North Carolina, there's Dollar General every place. They have been, they have a proven track record of being a very, very responsible corporate, you know, citizen. We do pride ourselves on being able to come a little into more rural communities and be able to provide a full shopping experience for people at competitive prices. Our stores are, are always very clean. Almost every store that we're doing in the state, in the state of California is a brand-new store. It's, it's brand-new built, we like to be standalone, we believe that adds convenience to our, our customers. Sometimes you go into a larger shopping center, it's hard to find parking and so on and so forth, so we do go through a little, pardon me, a little more expense by building our own stores and providing our own parking lots so that people are able to in, access our stores more quickly. I, I believe that they're all very clean, they're, they're very well-inventory, and every community that we've, we've been involved in has, we've been very, very well-received and, and we've been appreciated. I, I would like Mike to come up, because he, his, his management has been talking to some of the local customers, and some people have written, written some notes that saying that they would like to have the ability to purchase beer and wine at, at a Dollar General stores, but before he does that, I, I did want to pass out my little list that I printed off, just to kind of emphasize the point that this is kind of a standard. Sorry, thanks. But again, it is, we point it out because we are trying to be a full-service, you know, grocery store. A little bit new concept for the state of California, but it's being very well-received, a smaller format, you know, full-service grocery store. And I, I don't know of many grocery stores, major grocery store chains in the state of California that don't provide beer and wine. The last point I'd like to make on our beer and wine sales is it's truly incidental to the overall shopping experience. We typically only dedicate about two shelving units and two to four coolers. If you figured that out in square footage, if you just took the footprint of those shelves and those, those coolers, it typically represents less than 1%. I mean, a shelving unit is, is four feet by two feet, so each shelving unit is eight square feet. So if I dedicated two of those, that's 16 square feet, your coolers are typically two feet by three feet. And if I dedicated four of those, you know, we're talking another 24 feet, so we're, we're talking like 50 square feet out of, out of a 10,000-square-foot store, which is, you know, certainly a lot less than 1% of our store. It's simply intended to be a convenience item for the shoppers that are in there looking to be able to buy everything that they, in one location, rather than having to go to two locations. So with that, you know, thank you very much for, for your attention and, and, you know, the consideration of, of my points here, and if you would be obliged, if we could have Mike just say, add a couple of comments, I appreciate that, and then we'll be available for questions.
I would be okay with Mike coming up, but I think we have some questions for, for you before we change hands, if that's okay.
Certainly, fair enough, yeah, absolutely.
Because I know I have several.
Okay.
One would be, you said that Valley Springs was different. What was different? And do they have an alcohol license, because I don't see it on the list?
We were approved by the director to do that. The state has not issued that, and most of the time, it's typically just because of the paperwork exercise that we have to go through.
Okay, and did anybody do any research ahead of time for building the Dollar General in West Point on an alcohol license? And was there an anticipation of expecting to have one, that here we are over a year later, that you're coming forward asking for it? Because in my mind, I, I mean, you, you made a statement that bothered me.
Okay.
I'll be honest with you.
Okay.
That's just me. You said, we should be able to one-stop shop and that's it. Well, we're not in an urban area, we're in a rural area, and for us, our mom-and-pop stores matter. And being able to support all of the stores in the area matters in a rural area. I understand your point of one-stop shop, but it doesn't take us 40 minutes to get in and out of a store. I can go to three stores in my town and be in and out in 20 minutes. So it's different. I, with, when it's convenience, I understand the, the terminology, yeah, it would be convenience, I hit one store, I get everything I need, I move on. But within 650 feet, there's more options to be able to purchase the same product. So I guess what I would look for is, why didn't somebody investigate whether or not there was a license available before building? And was there an anticipation and expectation of that, but you, you did or did not have those answers?
So the Dollar General process that I'm, I'm, I'm familiar with is that we typically partner up with like developer-type of partners that will actually go in and make the land acquisition and build the building, and in some cases, we will make that purchase of the building when it's completed, or sometimes we will sign a long-term lease, 10 years with, with options beyond that, and lease that from that particular developer. So it's a, it's a developer, obviously, our real estate department has to, you know, be involved in it and either agree to purchase it when it's built, or, or sign a lease and so on and so forth. And they screen for multiple factors in terms of, you know, they, they have lots of criteria in terms of where they do store locations, and we do typically like to locate in, in busy intersections, and what we have found is that busy intersections happen to be kind of the place that a lot of other people, you know, tend, tend to locate, because it's just centrally located, and that's, that's key to our business model. We have located stores in many, many, in fact, probably the majority of the stores that we have located are in over-concentrated census tracts. And that, the whole census tract, you know, concept is that the census, people that draw the census tract are typically zoning blind, meaning that they don't calculate how many industrial, how many acres of industrial zone property there are, or how many acres of a commercially zoned property they are, they're looking to, you know, encapsulate a certain population number. Obviously, in a place like Calaveras County, it's a little, it's, it's more rural, so those census tracts become very, very large geographically, and obviously, you get into urbanized area and they become, you know, several, just several blocks, and so on and so forth. So our, or at least in my world, is that I, I typically am working in census tracts that are over-concentrated, and that's because of the zoning, that's where most of the commercially zoned property is, and that's where we, you know, want to locate, you know, restaurants and commercial types of, of businesses. And so it's not atypical to see that there's several grocery stores all within the same, you know, census tract area there.
Okay, so I guess I'm not getting the answer I'm looking for.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Did the consultants, when they decided on this location, where did they have an anticipation of being able to get a liquor license, and did they do research and see that there were none available before building? Because that plays a big role for me.
They did, and we went ahead and chose to go ahead and build, even though we knew that we were going to have to go find.
That's the answer I was looking for.
Yes, and, and we did know, yeah, I mean, we did know that there was, that we would have to be asking for a finding of public convenience or necessity, and that we would have to locate a particular license, you know, from within the county.
Okay.
There, and that's a situation we've had to deal with in, in many, 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 many communities.
Okay.
Previously. And we've also found, though, that we have opened up in rural communities there, and there have been some concerns of local businesses that, of our, of our business showing up there. But I'm not, I'm not aware of widespread, you know, other store closures there, because you're right, people do like to, you know, patronize some of the local places, they know the owners, they have a good feel, they carry a certain product that they like, and so on and so forth. So I have not seen this widespread, you know, issue that when Dollar General shows up, all the mom-and-pops close down.
Okay. Is there any other commissioner questions?
Yeah, I have a few.
Okay.
First, I want to say that Dollar General has been a model citizen before this planning commission, and as far as I can tell, in the, in following the, the agreements that was reached with the community and the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors in building this store, so this is not, I've, I've just driven past that one, I haven't been in it, but I'm, I'm not coming from a anti-Dollar General point of view here. I think it's probably a, a great addition to the, to the West Point community. And I, I did review my notes of when it was here before, and that there was a stated intention to sell beer and wine, so you're not pulling a fast one on us by all of a sudden showing up with beer and wine. That doesn't resolve the question, from my point of view. It seems to me, you're looking at public convenience, and I, I'm, I personally don't buy the public necessity arguments, but the public convenience is, is the issue I, I see before us, and you're looking at it from the convenience of the individual shopper within Dollar General. And I have several hypothetical questions. I mean, if, if say there were 20 other off-sale licenses within a mile here, would that change your answer at all? Would it still serve the public convenience that, to have beer and wine?
No, because I, I, it wouldn't change my answer, because, you know, we would probably be dealing with an, an area that has a very, very large population just outside of the census tract, you know, and that, that come into the census tract to do their, to do their shopping, and I find that the, that the free-market world is, is kind of the one that will sort of dict, you know, not, not dictate, but, you know, obviously, if, if there's too many people, won't make any money, and they'll start to shut the stores down, so a balance is achieved through the fair, you know, for free.
Another hypothetical, what if Ace Hardware next door to Dollar General? Another hypothetical, what if Ace Hardware next door to Dollar General, in the next lot? What if it currently had a beer and wine license? Does that change your answer at all?
No, because again, I do honestly feel that, hey, people are going to choose where they want to go to there, and if there's several choices there now, maybe there's a set of people that, hey, when they're in the hardware store, they think, oh, hey, this is really convenient, I'll buy some beer there, and hence, therefore, they're not going to walk over to Dollar General. But we have found that people that are doing their grocery store do find it very convenient to be able to come and do that. And I'm not a person that dictates where you, for sure, what is convenient for you.
So, if you got the license, and Ace Hardware decided, well, under that test by somebody in our store that's buying plastic glasses and a cooler, they might say, gee, I'd like to buy my beer here, too, and Ace Hardware applies for a beer and wine license. You would have no opposition to that?
I'm not aware that Dollar General has ever opposed anybody else's request to sell alcohol.
But that'd be consistent with your approach.
Absolutely.
Business and professions code, section 2387, point 4, I think it is, provides that the limitations on the number of licensed off-sale beer and wine licenses is required by the public welfare and morals. Should we consider this stated basis when we are taking into account whether the public convenience is served in a particular application?
Well, I think that the concept of ABC delegating the authority to a local community allows the local community to, you know, have some, like I was saying, some broad reasons either to allow us to go forward or to not. And you do absolutely, and I fully respect your ability to set your own local standards for what you think is in the best interest of your community.
And we don't, we shouldn't have to look to what the intent of the state is on limiting the number of liquor licenses. That should be immaterial to our decision as to whether public convenience is served?
I don't know if I completely understand that.
Well, the state is saying, it's important to us, as a matter of public welfare and morals, to limit the number of liquor licenses. And are you saying then, the state is saying, but local communities can decide whatever they want as to the number of liquor licenses that they want to have in their area?
Well, if I can go back, the whole concept of public convenience or necessity, it's my understanding kind of spawned out of some civil unrest in the city of Los Angeles in the early 90s. We kind of know it as the Rodney King riots there. And what happened was that the state kind of had there, unless you had a conditional use permit process, unless you regulated it through zoning laws, the state kind of had the only authority on issuing liquor licenses. And kind of through that process, there were some community leaders in the Los Angeles area that said, wait a minute, stop, because we feel like we've got too many in our community here. You know, the concept of a liquor store on every county, or on every corner. So the cities, you know, the cities in the, you know, leading California cities and the counties got together and said, hey, 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 we want some say-so in this thing. Because this isn't right that, hey, you guys determine how many can go into our community. So it was really a backlash on the ABC, where the cities and counties were taking some authority back away from the state, which I personally think is always refreshing, because I think the state always hands down to the counties a bunch of unfunded mandates and so on and so forth. So, they had to kind of come up with, okay, so somebody had to come in and broker a deal, so to speak. And so what they came up with is say, hey, we already have these jurisdictional lines called census tracts, so why don't we come up with a kind of a formula? And the formula, I believe, is, you know, one license per 1,500 people in a census tract, and because census tracts are somewhere between 2,500 and 5,000 people roughly. And that's a formula. That formula, my understanding, was somewhat of an arbitrary formula. They could have picked two, they could have picked three, they could have picked one per 2,500. But everybody made a settlement and said, this is the formula that we're going to use. And since then, we've gone ahead and lived with it. But the beauty of the system is, is that it gives, so if there's, you know, up to four, in this particular case, up to four licenses, the state ABC does not have to ask permission from you folks. But once they break over that, then, hey, the law is, hey, we don't want to be accused of putting too much into your community, so we're going to allow you guys, you know, your voice into the situation. And, you know, by and large, you can criticize it one way or another, but by and large, it's a system that seems to be working, and I think it's relatively fair. But it does require folks like us to come to you folks and say that, hey, we would like the opportunity, we'd like the privilege to sell it, and we do think it does, by doing that, it does add some convenience to your community. And then you have the right to judge whether or not, no, hey, guys, this is too much. But I can tell you with all sincerity, I've worked in a community like Elsinore, California, I think there's four that are approved in this one census tract, and now there's 17. But that's partly because that's where all of their big power shopping centers are and all of those things, and that's where they have sort of designed through land use to place all of those, all of those things. So I've seen some pretty big, you know, number gaps there, but every one of those, you do have to go back to the local community, just for some second set of eyes, to make sure that they're okay with that.
And you do agree that you have the burden of proving to us that the public convenience would be served?
I do. And I feel like I've provided some anecdotal information that would help you do that. There's, like I said, you're given some fairly broad authority, and that there's not, you know, some strict standards that are placed on that. And I feel that, you know, the analogy that, hey, you know, somebody wants to be able to purchase all of those, they should be allowed to, and that also, I feel like sometimes competition allows for businesses, kind of forces businesses to up their game and offer better services or products, and so on and so forth.
And as far as how you define public convenience, when I go to Merriam-Webster's dictionary, the word "public" has several meanings given. "Of or relating to or affecting all the people or the whole area of the nation or state." There's another one, "of or relating to people in general," and the other is devoted to the general or national welfare. Welfare being interesting, because of course, the business and profession statutes indicate that the limitations on the number is because of public welfare and morals. I don't see where that would jibe with your individual test of Mrs. Smith going into Dollar General, and gee, she's there, why should she have to go 400 feet to buy beer and wine somewhere else? If we look at this public convenience as meaning the convenience and necessity of all the people in the area, it seems to me that your test might be very narrow and outside the context of the statute.
Well, you know, in my experience, and I'm certainly not an attorney, and I haven't seen anybody hold a standard that says everybody has to be convenient.
No, I'm not saying that it has to be convenient to everybody.
You know, when you get, you know, we have shoppers, I don't know the number of shoppers that are coming into the store daily, but I can assure you, it's more than one. And we've had more than one person ask us, hey, can you guys, you know, when will you guys be able to sell beer and wine? And obviously, not everybody that comes in the door asks us that question, but, so I don't know quite how to answer, you know, a definition on public.
I'm just saying.
But we do have a, we do have a following, and we do have a lot of people that have been coming into the store. We've been fairly well-received because of our good products and our good service and our good pricing. And we have had people ask if they could purchase beer and wine, and obviously, we've told them that we haven't been able to get a license yet.
And would you comment on the planning department's position that, and you can correct me if I'm misstating, that one consideration we should give as to public convenience or necessity, or necessity, is if, say, Glencoe, which has a commercial zoned area, were to have a store there, and it would apply for a liquor license, that we should, at this point, kind of keep that prospect in mind when we're making decisions about liquor licenses here? Or are you saying that that should just be, well, there's already more than the state would allow in this area, we'll give you one more. On the same basis as what you're saying, we could give another one to Glencoe, and nobody's going to, as long as our public is in favor of it, what's the problem? Is that basically your position?
Yeah, that is my, you know, you have the ability to make a determination as to, hey, you know, how many is, you know, how many is enough? And, you know, like I said in the example, down in Lake Elsinore, California, I just know that because I live close there, they've gone ahead and granted 17 of them, because they felt like, hey, this isn't, this isn't becoming a problem, and we've got people shopping in multiple places. So I, you know, and I served on my own planning commission in my own community for about six years, I was the vice chairman, and we went through a general plan update process there. And we designated lots of, like, you know, different land uses and so on and so forth. But at one point, we had to admit to ourselves that not necessarily because we colored a parcel red, does it truly mean that it's a viable from a free-market enterprise as a commercial piece of property? I mean, at the end of the day, the professional business people that are in it for profit are going to decide, hey, that is a great location to locate a doctor's office. Some might say, that's terrible, that's a terrible location for it, no doctor's going to want to be there, or no Dollar General's going to want to be there, no gas station's going to be out around the corner. So, you know, I'm not familiar with the community, so I don't want to speak out of turn, but, you know, the parcels that are in Glencoe, I don't know if any retailer would actually make the investment into that.
That's why I oppose it, it's a hypothetical.
Yeah, yeah, it's a hypothetical. It might be perfect for a small, little medical office building, or something along those lines, but in terms of an actual retailer that wants to sell groceries and that, you could line up a thousand people, and they say, no, 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 we're not going to go there, so.
One last question, and that, just to clarify, if I understood you correctly, the director of ABC has approved a license for the Valley Springs store, but the paperwork hasn't come through yet? Is that, did I understand?
I know that we've applied and that we've received the letter that Mr. Marr indicated that it would serve a public convenience or necessity, and that paperwork has been submitted.
Oh.
In the process.
ABC has not taken action on that yet.
No, not that I'm aware of. And, you know, to be honest with you, people can protest at the ABC level, too. They could be here today, and they could protest it here, you guys could vote, you know, one way or another, you could vote yes, which I'm hopeful for, but, and then I could take that to the ABC. Well, somebody could also protest at the ABC. We're required by ABC to kind of go through a similar process as you do in a land use type of situation. We have to put a poster up, it's got to be up there for 30 days, they have very, you know, strict standards on kind of poster sizes and what it has to say. And then we have to do a mailing to everybody, you know, within a certain radius, and it has to be a certified mailing. And people are then able to, within a certain period, protest it. And we do, from time to time, get protests. And sometimes, there is an administrative hearing. Oftentimes, we're able to kind of meet a compromise, you know, that what was their concerns? Because ABC wants to know, hey, what is your concern? Sometimes, it's a public safety issue, sometimes it's for other reasons, and then ABC, like you folks, you know, considers everybody's arguments and makes a decision based on that. So there is a two-second process. For my company, I only work on local entitlement things. We have a different group that works on the state paperwork there. My understanding is, is that we should be getting issued a license relatively soon.
Thank you, making your position very clear, and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
Going back to what we were discussing at the beginning, and you touched on it, in your experience, there are other counties or cities that have designated a subordinate officer or body to make this public convenience or necessity determination?
Yes, sir.
And in your experience, have one or more of those subordinate bodies or officers denied that request?
I can't think of a Dollar General one, but I know of another retailer that has done that. In that particular case, it was the city, and they had designated their chief of police to be the determining person.
And was there an appeal from that?
Yes, sir. And it went to the, at that time, I think it went to the city council, the city of Marietta. I know of the community development director that made a decision, then it was appealed to the planning commission, and then to the city council.
And was the, was there a determination of public convenience and necessity made after that appeal, or on that appeal?
Yes, I believe in both those cases, the, in Marietta, that's the community I live in, so that's why I'm so familiar with it. And the community development director made a denial. It was appealed to the planning commission, the planning commission overturned the denial. A local individual then went ahead and appealed it to the city council, and the city council upheld the planning commission's determination, and it went through. Those are just some examples that I know of, it probably happens.
Okay, was the final decision then to grant the request of convenience and necessity?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then, did the ABC then issue the license?
Yes.
Okay, so then that is precedent for an appeal in this case. If it were granted, then the ABC would, or at least could, go ahead and issue the license?
You know, without me being a lawyer, I believe that this is a very common practice, that a delegate, such as Mr. Marr or our police chief, can make a decision, and that decision is appealable, kind of just through, like a land use decision would be. And that I'm not aware that ABC hasn't recognized that. I believe that the ABC is very respectful of the local municipalities and your procedures, and that says, hey, it should run its due process through your community, and once it's run through that due process, we will, we will honor, you know, your system for the due process. And you're right, sometimes, in the Chula Vista thing, it was a chief of police, but in that case, their procedure was that it was appealed immediately to the city council, and it did bypass the planning commission in that particular level. In Marietta, it went to the planning commission, and then from there, it went to the city council. So I think it's kind of based on, you know, your typical procedure for land use type of decisions.
Okay, now, if there is a finding of public convenience and necessity here by the county, the ABC, if I understand you correctly, could deny the license anyway if somebody else filed a protest or an appeal to the ABC on the grounds of over-concentration or whatever?
Yes, sir. They absolutely could. There's kind of, it's a dual-pronged process that somebody like ourselves has to go through in this case. One is, we have to, you know, obtain a public or convenience finding from you. And then ultimately, the ABC then has to rule on it, and somebody, the public, has the ability to come here at this process level, as well as go over here to the state process.
Okay. One last question. What, if anything, makes issuing a license here serve public convenience or necessity any more than would be the case for any well-run safe store carrying the same categories of goods, since one-stop shopping could be said to be more convenient most times for most places anyway?
I would concur with that, that if a, you know, larger format supermarket, like a Rowley's or a Safeway, you know, located, that I would find that, yeah, if they were in the census tract, that, yeah, that would be a finding of public convenience and necessity would be appropriate for that.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? Okay, then you want to bring?
Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate all the time, Mike. I just wanted Mike, because he, you know, works with his local team a lot, and just some anecdotal information about, you know, the customers and that.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Mike Dubert, I'm district manager for Dollar General, I've been with them for about six years now. We've had similar situations in the areas with what's going on now. The only thing that I wanted to bring to the table was that, you know, right now, what we're getting from the customers in West Point, which has been a great outpouring, we've done more business in there than we anticipated, and I think that's going to continue.
done more business in there than we anticipated, and I think that's gonna continue. It's a great location for us. It's... We work well with smart, small communities where we're not really there to put anybody out of business. We're just there to compete with other businesses, but yet give a service. What we're finding right now is, though, is that some of the customer issues that we're having is that they're actually going out of town and going to Pine Grove Pioneer to do shopping with Dollar General, because they have beer and wine there. And that's one of the problems. Not a problem, I mean, we're still getting the business, but your shopper, your customer, your person in that little town there is driving twenty, thirty miles in the mountains to get a convenience at another location that we should be able to have at the same location here. I get everything that you guys are saying. I get all the issues that we're having, but the bottom line is the customers. We're trying to serve a customer, and there's other stores in town. Again, we're not there to put anybody out of business. I don't think if everybody ran their businesses correctly, they wouldn't go out of business. Pine Grove, we went right across the highway, another store there. He's still in business. Complained crazily before we went in there, and he's still working. He's still in business. We're right by a convenience store in La Grange that has beer and wine and gas, and they're doing just fine. So it's not to put anybody out of business, but it's just really to serve the customers. We're getting in excess of eight to ten phone calls a day when we're gonna sell beer and wine in the stores. We're getting customers daily, again, that would say that they would love to buy it there because of just the convenience, but also pricing, which is a little different in some other stores than we are. And I think one thing that we do, too, is that, you know, we have a small concentration of beer and wine that we sell. Just like Steve said, it's not a very large area of what we do in the store, but it's more a thirty-pack or a twelve-pack or a bottle of wine. We don't sell cases. We don't sell sixteen-ounce cans or forty-ounce bottles, things of that nature. We're pretty generic in what we sell, just like the rest of our stores. So we don't have, again, ten kinds of sugar in our store. We have one. We have one kind of flour. We have, you know, Duncan Hines cake mixes. It's just basic. And what we find is our customers are looking for certain basic things, and that's what we try to strive. We stay strictly with our customers, what our customers are asking for, and we don't vary from that at all. The other thing is, we're very good partnerships with the cities and the little towns that we're in. We do a lot of things with Literacy Fund. We try to help the school systems, and that's an ongoing thing that Dollar General does. Recently, here in the last year, we gave a big, pretty decent side check to Stockton Unified School Districts, and also, we've gone and done a, I think it was a two-thousand donation to the Pine Grove, one of the schools in Pine Grove. So we're here to be partnerships. I'm sorry?
Are those donations gonna stop if the alcohol can't be sold?
No, no, but I'm just trying to give a little variance of what we do and what we try to do. It has nothing to do if we sell alcohol or not. We have stores that we don't sell alcohol, beer and wine. It's up to you. It's not up to us. We're asking for the possibility, but it's not up to us if we're gonna do that or not.
Do you have letters of support that he indicated you may have?
In here?
Yeah.
I don't know. Well, we have... I have some notes that I brought from people that have written down. I don't know if anybody's actually here, customers. Just a few things. I have a Sean Morris. You guys should get beer, because we get overcharged at the gas station. I would love not to have to go all the way down the hill to get wine to avoid... Save me three hours a week drive time. Mr. Rubelson, I don't like paying twenty dollars for a twelve-pack. Dusty Della would like to see cheaper beer and wine prices in town. I would like to have beer here at Dollar General, so when we get off work, we don't have to buy it from the expensive gas station. It would be very nice to have some beer to relax after work, plus it would be more cost-efficient for me. It would be nice for the community to have beer and wine at cheaper prices and more convenient. And then just from my store manager, basically, she's just saying that she's getting eight to ten people that are asking for it on a daily basis in the store, four to eight calls a day on the telephone, same thing, just checking to see if we can have it in our store to sell.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Are there any further questions?
I just wanna restate what I said at the beginning of the presentation, is that I think your company has been very receptive to modifying your designs and trying to be a good citizen in West Point, and from what I see, maybe we'll be hearing differently from the public, that you've upheld all the commitments that you gave before you came in, and we appreciate that.
The company is very good to do that, and they try to do whatever they can to fit in with the communities.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Worcester, the example I gave in Chula Vista, I just wanted to make sure I was accurate. The decision was made by the police department. It was appealed to the city council. The applicant withdrew it and never went forward to the city council for a final decision on that, so I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that one, but the one in Marietta I know went all the way through the process.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay. This time, I would like to go to the public, if anybody would like to comment on this application. We have a five-minute timeline in the planning commission, a little bit different than the supervisors, so...
Okay, good morning, everyone. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to comment on this, and I would like to second what Tim has said. I wanna thank you guys for your support, and Dollar General for hearing our concerns about the looks of the building, the landscaping, the size of the sign. They were really good at coming through, and I think that's one of the best-looking stores, Dollar General's, around. And I think that West Point is in the honeymoon period with Dollar General. There, you have a new store in town. Everybody is going there, and I do think it provides the town with some needed access to basic necessities for people who have a hard time traveling. I... That being said, I think that the consultant before me really comes from an urban experience, and Lisa, I agree with you. This is a small town. We live in a rural area. We don't have a traffic jam. We... It doesn't take forty minutes to go to your shopping. We like our small stores. We like the diversity. I think it's also a little disingenuous to say, oh, competition is good. Of course, Dollar General can beat the prices of small stores, and it's not because necessarily they're badly managed, so I think this is a little disingenuous. And I think that we have some three small businesses in town that already sell alcohol. Alcohol is not just anything. Alcohol is a dangerous potential for the community, and God knows that in West Point, we need less alcohol rather than more, or less alcohol access. Having directed a community center for almost twenty years, I guarantee you that alcohol does a lot of damage, and personally, I would like to see our youth have less easy access to alcohol. The store is located close to the school. It is exciting and new for kids to go to the Dollar General store. There are things that they can get there. I think more exposure to alcohol is not a good thing for these kids and this youth. The convenience part, it may be true for some people. I agree that it's not very hard to just walk down the street and get your alcohol, and maybe if you... Some people, I hear they mentioning a lot of requests from people, but that was not very well documented, so I'm not saying this is a lie, but I'm not totally sure about that kind of information. So I think we have alcohol available in Willseville. We have alcohol available in Railroad Flat. These communities are nearby as well. Three licenses already in West Point, such a small town. I really feel that Dollar General could do very well in our town without a license, and I hope that you take into consideration these comments, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Sandy Maynard. I'm one of the owners of Maynard Management, which is very close to their building. We share the same driveway. I've been a resident of West Point for thirty-eight years, been a part... Lived there, been a property owner, been a business owner, and I'm very much in favor of the Dollar General. I like the idea of the convenience. If I wanna get a bottle of wine, I can go right across the parking lot and get it. I believe competition is important in our community. I do know a lot of people have told me that the beer and wine in the other little local places is very expensive, so, you know, I'm with... I hear that from a lot of people, since I'm right next door, so just wanted to say I'm in favor of them and their offering of beer and wine to the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Dan Biker. I'm a property owner in West Point, and I lease out one of the buildings, one of the liquor licenses that is there. I think as you're coming into town, you see a population of seven-hundred-and-eighty-three, and there's three existing liquor licenses, and in essence, all we're doing is cannibalizing the businesses that have been there for years and years and years and years. The three stores and licenses that have been there have been in place twenty-plus years, probably. And I don't believe that there's a need for an additional license. Competition's all well and good. Yeah, I think everybody can do a better job, but I think we're oversaturating, and I'll reiterate that Railroad Flat and Willseville are both within driving distance, and we're in a rural community. We drive everywhere. We have to go... We don't have anywhere that you can get everything. Unfortunate, but true, and we do drive to get what we want, where we want. And so I agree to this point where you guys have stood, where the county has stood with it, and I would appreciate you keep that stance and deny this application.
Good morning.
Good morning. Well, I'm the only one left in the room, so might as well get up and say something. Good morning, planning commissioners. Calling flat with myvalleysprings.com. A couple things. One, I'm very curious as to the situation in Valley Springs. That store, Dollar General store there, has been open for, I don't know, a year or two years, something like that, and it doesn't have a liquor license, so interesting what the status is, if it was actually approved by our planning department, but ABC said no, or it's in status, or I'm not sure what the situation there. I've just gone in there for the first time recently to check out the stock, and I asked the clerks, you know, if they had a beer and wine license, and they said no. And I said, well, did that seem to bother business? And they said, no, doesn't seem to bother business. We have lots of people stopping by. So there's a lot of places in Valley Springs to get beer and wine already, you know, at least three gas station convenience stores, a shopping store, the lumberyard. You know, there's plenty of places to get it, so maybe ABC has decided that they don't need another place. I don't know. I'm very curious as to why that was okayed and it doesn't have a license, so... Anyway, and then the second thing is, as you brought up, Lisa, the issue of being inconvenient to go to different stores in our towns. I don't find it inconvenient at all. I find it a part of normal rural life. I enjoy going to the different stores, the hardware store, lumberyard for plants, and, you know, going to the drugstore, going to, you know, different stores. So I don't at all consider it extremely inconvenient, that I can't buy everything I want at one store, so I think that's part of rural life, and I don't think people that move here expect that, so that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, being... Seeing that there's no further public comment, I'll go ahead and close public comment, and I'm going to bring it back to the commissioners for deliberation. Well, I don't think we rebuttal only on appeals.
I've got a couple questions of...
It is an appeal. Gina, anything to rebuttal? No? No? Okay, is there anything you'd like to rebuttal based on public comment? Keeping it short?
I promise. I'm actually trying to look up for you what the status is of this Valley Springs. I'm looking at it...
Oh, that would be awesome to get an update on that. Thank you.
Yeah, I...
We can sit for a minute.
Okay.
Actually, why don't we do this? Why don't we take just a break for about five minutes, and then we'll come back?
I'll make a call to the office.
Perfect. I mean, it's not relevant, but I... Okay, are we ready to re-adjourn and go back to discussion here? You were done. Okay, you had the one question you wanted to add or answer.
Okay, so I got the status on the Valley Springs license. So the license that we were going to bring here to West Point is actually in escrow, being purchased from the same census tract as Valley Springs. Valley Springs is in a different census tract than this is, and so they had opened up an escrow to purchase a license that's in the census tract where Valley Springs is, and they were going to bring it into here to West Point there. And then the... In Valley Springs, and that would be a census tract, when it left, would have been an under-concentrated census tract, and we were going to be filing for an original license. Escrows are kinda funny. Once you lock in and you identify a location, you can't just, like, you know, hey, we decided, we changed our mind. So if we are approved, we're going to bring that license here. If, for some reason, we were denied, then we're gonna cancel that escrow and have it be for our Valley Springs store. So I don't know if that makes a lot of sense, but it's a little confusing, but that's kinda what happened, and the... Anyway, there you have it. There's the explanation.
So then you would apply again for a license for Valley Springs?
For Valley Springs.
Yeah.
There.
Right now...
It made a difference between whether it be an original license or one that you actually had purchased. So we had purchased a license that was going to go into this particular store here, and it was moving out of the census tract that is in Valley Springs. And hence, then, the Valley Springs store, we would have applied at ABC for a license.
So right now, there's no application or anything pending as far as Valley Springs goes?
Correct, but I think Mr. Marr can, you know, and Gina can say that we...
So I have to...
The PCN determination was already made on that particular store.
I super appreciate you bringing that information forward, but for us, we have to stay on the fine line of the appeal for convenience and...
I know. It was just anecdotal, and everybody was asking the questions. I thought I just...
And then if the public has further questions, they can walk across the aisle and you'll talk with them.
I will.
Thank you.
I will.
No, no, I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, so bringing it back to the commissioners for discussion. Who would like to start?
Mike?
I'm sorry. There we go.
Planning director's been given the authority to make this determination by the board of supervisors. Is there any guidance as to what the scope or review of this commission is of that decision? Do we give deference to that? Do we just say, no, we just see it differently?
Well, in previous appeals, we kinda just have our own minds. We let Peter weigh in if he would like, if you'd like to hear from Peter and his reasoning behind his... He doesn't have to do that, though, because it falls on us and them and their burden of proof, bringing us evidence as to why Peter was wrong. Peter's not on trial here, so...
Yeah, I don't have... I don't believe there's anything in our code that says that you have to defer to the reasons why I made my decision. It's a...
De novo review is always safest.
Okay.
In the absence of guidance, right?
Okay, one more question. Do any of the other stores in West Point that have these licenses carry the same range or anything like the same range of products that Dollar General does?
I can't answer that question. I don't know. Gina, do you know?
I did not personally visit each one of those stores, so I can't speak to what their...
I think we have a member of the public that could give some input on that if we want to reopen public comment, if that's important.
I don't understand the reason... The question. Can you rephrase that for me?
I'm wondering if the... Any of the other stores in West Point that... I'm wondering if the, any of the other stores in West Point that do have these licenses to sell beer and wine carry the same range of products.
Okay.
Or anything like it that Dollar General does.
Okay, so like, is there a grocery store in town doing the same? Okay. Can you, would you be willing to come up and answer that? Actually, I would prefer it not be you, because you own one of those licenses. How about the lady behind you? Yeah. Oh, you no longer own it. Okay, then you could probably speak to it. I'm sorry. You can both speak.
You can all three speak.
Well, there's three locations that have been there for numerous years. All three of those locations are much smaller in size than what the Dollar General is. All three of them carry milk, bread, staple items. Betty Crocker pancake mixes or cake mixes, flour, sugar.
Are they, are they grocery stores or like convenience stores or?
One of them is the West Point Market.
Market, okay.
West Point Market is owned by Rick somebody or other.
But it's an actual grocery.
It's not.
Okay, it's a grocery store.
It's not a grocery store.
No.
It's an oversized convenience store, as is Casey's Corner. The third license is a liquor store that would not carry as much of the grocery staples type items, you know, mustard, ketchup, mayo.
Is that West Point Trading?
Yeah, West Point Trading Post. It is, it has the hard liquor license, which is a type twenty-one, which is not what they're applying for. But twenty-one allows you beer and wine and alcoholic beverages as well. The other two licenses are type twenty.
Which is limited to beer and wine only.
Correct, beer and wine only. So, you have two beer and wine only licenses and one beer and wine and.
And hard liquor.
Rum, vodka, whiskey. And all three are within six hundred and fifty feet. I know the gas station's property actually connects to the Dollar General property in back corners.
Okay. Thank you. That does. Thank you. Does that help you?
Yes.
Okay. That opened up a can of worms for me. You good? This is your time.
As some people may have noticed, I've missed a meeting or two in the past few months. Because of some traveling, I've done a lot of it, way too much, out of state. I've been to Maryland. I've been to Virginia. I've been to Texas. Louisiana. Where else? I don't know. And I'm also a regular imbiber of wine, so I do buy wine. And I occasionally go to the grocery store with my wife. I don't buy anything. She picks it and does it. Anyway, I ran into this situation, and I'd forgotten all about it when I was a kid in Virginia. They have this thing called ABC stores, and you can't get beer and wine in most grocery stores. Craziest thing in the world nowadays. Back in eighteen oh-two, when I was younger, yeah, that's, that's the way it worked. Did not get liquor or beer and wine in a grocery store. It was unheard of. And then over the years, that's changed, to the point now where, as a consumer, I expect it in the grocery store. Yes, in the rural areas, it's probably, we still quite, haven't gotten to that point, but maybe we should. The Dollar General was apparently before us with the knowledge that it would be selling beer and wine. Perhaps if we reject them now, that is a bit inconsistent. I don't know, maybe not. There's some comments about burden of proof. I think the applicant has shown they've had quite a few calls and requests for the beer or wine. I think they've met that burden. There was one comment someone made about the test being extremely inconvenient. The test is convenience. Public convenience, we can argue all day what public means, but to me, it's inconvenient to have to go to a store, get your groceries, and then drive over to the next store to get the whatever. So, I think, I think the convenience test has been met. Just in all fairness to the applicant, I think they should get it.
Fairness to the applicant. I know they intended to sell beer and wine. I think they can be assumed to have known what the situation was as far as the number of liquor licenses in town, because I assume that they do quite a study of what their competition is going to be in a town before they, before they move in. And I'm not saying that they plan to put people out of business, but I do think that we have to look at the definition of public convenience within the context of the statute. And the statute, the Business and Professions Code, is basing all these limitations of liquor license numbers on the public welfare and morals. That, that is a context, and there's, there's a reason for this state standard. And I think we are interpreting a state statute. We are, we have considerable discretion as to what public convenience might mean. I don't think that, it's been shown that it's any public necessity. But I, I do not believe that they've satisfied their burden of proof, because their, their standard is looking at just the individual customer within the store. And if you're standing here buying bread, is it more convenient to buy wine and beer over here? Or, in this case, go down the block and buy it? Well, of course, it's more convenient to turn and grab the, grab a bottle of wine and be on your way. But that is a standard that is completely independent of the context of the statute, which is a statute that's limiting the number of liquor licenses within a certain area. And I think we have to look at the word "public" as well as "convenience." And as I indicated, if you just look to Webster's Dictionary, "public" is a much more generalized consideration. If you tie it to "public convenience," you need to be looking at the, the benefit to the public as a whole in the area. And I think even though people have embraced Dollar General, and Dollar General appears to be quite a good citizen within West Point, I would wager that the people of West Point don't want the other businesses to fail. And I think that can be considered as a part of public convenience. It's more generalized convenience of the public within the community. So, we have the context of the statute, and we also have the context of a very small town that already has three liquor licenses within it in an area that already has more than the number of liquor license a state would provide. So, I think with their standard of convenience, meeting that standard does not satisfy their burden of proof. And I think the inconvenience of somebody having to go to another business in town to buy their beer and wine is, is something that does not shock my conscience. And I think that with Dollar General in town, the other stores with liquor licenses might well figure out that it's a competitive thing to do to lower their liquor prices a bit in order to draw people in for the other goods that those other businesses sell. So, I, I don't believe that they've satisfied their burden of proof, and, and I would deny the appeal.
I'm satisfied now that the appeal is procedurally proper, given what's happened in other cases. The ABC has not denied a license on the ground that the subordinate officer or body had the last word. So, we're okay there. The standard is public convenience or necessity, period. I don't see morals or public welfare being part of that standard. And I'm not concerned about what may happen in Glencoe or other places that may want to, your finding of public convenience and necessity if somebody ever wants to open a store there. I don't think granting a license here is any bar to somebody in Glencoe or elsewhere getting one themselves if they can show public convenience or necessity, despite the over-concentration. There appear to be no other stores in West Point that offer the same range or anything like it of products that Dollar General does, which makes the one-stop shopping point carry, I think, more force than it might otherwise. And we do have evidence that people are asking for this store to be able to carry beer and wine. I'm not seeing any inconvenience to anybody by granting this request. I think that it would prove too much to say that we would never really grant a request if you had to worry unduly about the effect on other businesses. I think it's somewhat speculative to base a finding on the possibility that other businesses may not make it if this request is granted. And just generally, it seems to me that when people see a, see a market and they're, they're willing to put their money out there, and if you have the public convenience being served, and I think it is here, I don't think we should be standing in the way of it. So, I'm in favor of granting this appeal.
I am going to stand behind a county's decision. I'm, I agree with what they said. There's too many of the licenses in a small area.
It's broken. I'm going to uphold the planning department's decision. So, the appeal strictly is based upon convenience. Is it more convenient to walk over one aisle and pick it up? Yeah. When I look at the bigger picture, based on a rural area of convenience, because I believe the word "convenience" can carry quite a distance. I, I, and I do understand that Dollar General, when we approved it, and I voted on it, said they were going to do alcohol. I understand that, and I was one of the yes votes to allow the store to come in. I think the most bothersome thing for me was that they knew there weren't any licenses available and that they would have to appeal through the ABC to gather another license. Knowing that, and then I understand that the ABC doesn't say, "Hey, we can't issue anymore," because they have a process in place that does allow more issuances. So, it's not a total denial. Their anticipation and their procedure before us was honest and open, and this is what we intend to do. One of the comments that was made about the, in the report, was four type twenty licenses in that area that ABC was going to allow based on the census there. Then I hear that there's only two type twenty licenses there, because the other ones are twenty-one. I'm confused where these four licenses are coming in on type twenty, because they're different licenses. So, does, when you have a type twenty-one, do you also get issued a type twenty? Because type twenty-one should encompass all of.
The ABC is grouping licenses. I think they're, they don't include, say, for instance, oh-two wine growers licenses in this category. They don't include the license that you would get for a bar in this category. I believe maybe Steve might be able to, you know, tap on that a little bit further. But, but I, I believe the way they operate is, is they categorize the licenses. It's not just all ABC licenses. It depends on what it is. But the type twenty and the type twenty-one are categorized together through the ABC.
Okay.
And the other two are the ones that are located in Welceville and Rower Flat. So, those are the four type twenties.
So, there's a total of five within the entire census tract.
Okay.
Currently, they only allow the issuance of four. At the time that the fifth license was issued, the census tract, census tract four was allowed by state five licenses. And demographics have changed, and they've since then pulled it back, and now they're only allowing four. So, at the time that the fifth license was approved through the ABC, there wasn't an over-concentration. So, this is actually the first license of over-concentration as far as issuance is concerned. But if you look at the numbers of licenses allowed today, that I guess would be technically two if this one was approved. But here again, at the time that the fifth license was approved, there was no over-concentration, and it was just simply allowed.
Okay.
Or permitted.
Well, I don't get to put my personal feelings in this, because I have to vote based on what's presented before me, because I honestly feel that we have to protect our rural areas, and I think this could have some impacts on those other smaller businesses. Do I get to be the one that makes that decision, and how those other people run their businesses? I don't. I have to basically take the appeal before the way that it's presented to me, and it's based on, is it more convenient to walk one aisle over and do all my shopping in one store? It is, I, I think. So, personally, I hate to see damage done to those other stores. I think that Dollar General has served an amazing purpose in all of our communities that they've come into. But I, this is a hard one for me. I, I'm looking at the convenience, and I think they've met the standard of convenience, and that's what the appeal's based on, so I have to put my personal feelings aside on this. So, that's where I'm at. So what? So, somebody make a motion? Or would you like to have more discussion? Okay, good.
Discussion, and that I, I think public convenience means a broader thing than the standing in the aisle and an individual making this decision. Public convenience includes the good of the public's convenience of having other stores that will remain open, keeping competition in a, in a small rural town viable, I think, is a, is a reasonable consideration in the context of the statute and the context of the facts here. So, it isn't just convenience or the statute. We're rendering the, the idea of limitations on, on licensing, number of licenses, off-sale licenses within a certain area, we're rendering that completely meaningless. It's always going to be, if, if Ace Hardware comes to us now, and if another store within West Point comes to us now, by this president, if they walk into Ace Hardware and Ace Hardware says, "Gee, I want, we're going to sell glasses and a cooler and this sort of thing to complete the picnic corkscrew, too. That's great. We can all sell that at the hardware store, and why don't we sell the beer and wine?" Well, it'd certainly be more convenient for somebody buying the glasses and the corkscrew and the, and the cooler to buy beer and wine there. Well, fine, then another store in town would have exactly the same argument. There's, we're, we would be making a decision completely out of the context of the statute involved, which is about limitations on liquor licenses, by basically saying, "If you're in a store and it's there, it's more convenient, and therefore, the public convenience is served." I just think that's, that's, I think you'd be well within the statutory reasoning to make the decision the way.
I believe you would be correct in that statement if the statutory reasoning said, "That's it. You can't even come to a." You can't even come to us and ask for anything further. But the statutory doesn't say that. It gives you a right and an option to take it one step further. So that opened the door, and it opened the door for the appeal. They're not appealing here today based on, should we have four or five licenses in this district? They're appealing based on, is it more convenient? And as an individual, I am a public. I am an individual. And for the convenience, it's there. Would I prefer to support all my local businesses and go to each different store? I'm that person. Yeah, I would. But is that what the public is asking for there? Do they want the ability to walk in and make the purchases? You know, I can't speak for those people. If the option's there, and they say, I'm not buying my alcohol here, I want to go over there and buy it, they still have the convenience of going across the street. That's their choice, not mine. That's an individual public's choice. So, I mean...
Thank you for letting me vent. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. I just vented back, and I didn't mean to. I guess I'm not so much venting back as much as I'm trying to stay on task with, what is this appeal about? Was it giving four licenses or five licenses? No, because that's under the purview of ABC, not us. We don't get to make that decision. We have to make the decision, is it more convenient to buy it all in one store? Do I prefer to support local business? Yes. Is that the decision I'm making here today? No. So, I don't know. Do you want to tell me I'm wrong again? I would be acceptable to listening. I really am.
No, I just disagree. I think you're making a very narrow, narrow point of view that renders meaningless the whole idea of, let's look at whether licenses, another liquor license in this town is, will serve the public, public convenience. I think you'd be well within your rights and the power of the planning commission for you to make your decision on the basis of, what is the public, West Point, public Here is it to do it on the basis of an individual standing in the aisle of a market. If that's the standard, it will always be satisfied, and we could have 22 licenses within West Point. We would have no basis for denying a license, another license, and another, and another, and another in West Point if the basis is of an individual buyer standing in the store and saying, huh, it's more convenient for me to buy that.
I think ABC would be the one to make the decision if the district cannot substantiate the numbers, and they'll be the one to say, this is the reason we have these rules, and we're going to deny it. Now, if the public sees the decision we made and they absolutely hate it, they get the right to write ABC and say no. Or the people that he's reading from letters saying, then there's no written testimony there to satisfy good public. But if they want at that point, those public people need to take the time and write the letter to ABC supporting that and the people that don't want it.
And we have to take the time to apply state law, and you just look at it differently than I do, and so...
And I respect you.
And we do. I respect you.
Okay.
Well, I think that Commissioner Latish's argument, it does prove too much. Because if you're going to start with a position that this has to be severely limited for public welfare and morals, and you stack that sort of thing out there as sort of, you have to prove some kind of a nebulous benefit to the public at large, how can you ever do that? You can't. So, and it's not just one shopper, you know, having to go to different stores. It's a bunch of shoppers having to go to different stores. And those shoppers are the people that make up your public. That's who you're concerned about. And in this case, we're not talking about a license requested by Ace Hardware. This is requested by what is, for West Point, the full-service store. That's it. And to me, that tips the balance in favor of public convenience. Why exclude beer and wine from what is otherwise a full-service store on the grounds that somehow some general members of the public aren't being served? So I'm with my original position.
Well, and I also remember when we were reviewing this and those other convenience stores, some of them came before us and said, I don't have a problem with them coming in here. And at that point in time during that hearing, those other convenience stores did say and did hear that they were going to do alcohol. And they had the right to come here today, too, and say, you're going to put me out of business if they're not here.
I remember the restaurant in town saying, fully supporting it. I don't remember the convenience question, but I don't mean to beat a dead horse here.
You're not. You're not. And this is good discussion. We need to make a good decision.
Well, the other thing I would say was, is I, too, believe in supporting local businesses, including those that have been here, and especially those that have been here for a long time. But, you know, people can, the local people can vote with their pocketbooks, too.
Vote with their what?
Their pocketbooks. They can choose to buy their beer and wine at these other stores all they want. It's just, it just gives them the choice. And maybe it makes for a better economic environment for everybody if Dollar General is able to have this license.
Well, that's going to be up to ABC. Our choice, our decision here today is based on convenience, so that's where my thought process is. And unless there's any other comments...
Nope.
Peter, you have anything you want to add?
No, no.
No, no. No, 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 no. Gina, you good?
All good.
Okay. All right. So at that point, I need somebody to make a motion.
I would make the motion to grant the appeal.
I'll second it.
Okay.
So we have a resolution, and we take action based on resolution. The resolution was supporting the planning, my decision to deny the application.
Thank you.
We will need to revise that. We could do that and bring it back to you at the next meeting. And the basic findings are that the, as I understand, for the, what sounds like the majority of the board or the planning commission is that you wish to grant it based on the fact that the West Point Dollar General store is a full-service grocery store, and it is in the public convenience to be able to purchase beer and wine while shopping at the grocery store. Are there other findings along those lines that you would like to add to that, or is that sufficient?
Well, I think that it needs to be added that when they applied for their license and we approved it, they did publicly state they were going to have the alcohol. It's not something that was withheld from the public in any form. It was discussed here in length. I think that's an important factor in the decision. Does anybody else have anything they want?
Well, I agree with that comment.
Thank you.
I think that's the number-one reason I'm voting this way.
But they, since it wouldn't support the finding, we, you know, the finding, we needn't put in the evidence that they were well aware that they'd already be over the limit of the number of liquor licenses. I just, when you do the resolution, I just have one suggested change on the, where are we at? One, two, three, four, five, six, the whereas. Whereas the planning department of the County of Calaveras on September 19, 2018 upheld its original determination.
I, too, had some suggestions on a resolution that are independent of the result. On page one, the one, the fourth whereas clause down, it begins, whereas the planning department of the County of Calaveras on August 31, 2017, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I would add at the end, and denied the request, because it did.
And given the result, you probably want to change the word "could" to "did not."
And then in the next whereas clause, when I read it, they didn't actually style it as a request for reconsideration. It was just a second request. And so I would change that to read, whereas the planning department of the County of Calaveras on August 27, 29, 2018, received a second request for a determination of public convenience or necessity on the grounds that the applicant had not received the August 31, 2017 denial. Because I think that's accurately what happened.
Yes, I would agree with that.
To avoid the problem of the 90-days thing, if we're going to run the 90 days from the August 27, 2018, it seems to me you want to have the governing body make its decision within 90 days of that date. And, you know, so...
I think that appeal processes typically would extend those deadlines. We made our determination within 90 days. The fact that it takes us time to schedule a hearing, notice it, that shouldn't somehow be constrained by that initial action date.
Okay.
And we are within the 45-day restricted timeframe for appeals.
Well, we won't get back into our circularity.
Yeah.
Okay. Gina, do you, okay, so I think what we're going to be doing here is voting to modify the resolution, to uphold it, and to bring this back on date certain for passage. Is that correct?
I think you could take that final action today. I think all we're doing is bringing back the final wording of the resolution based on the discussion that we had here. So it would just be more of a consent type of action. Yeah, this is, this was the language that we intended when we took action to grant the appeal.
And if there's any problem with the language you come up with, we could take it off consent.
Right.
Correct it.
But it just, it's not like we're continuing action on it. I think the action would be final today.
Okay.
It's just a matter of bringing back the final language of the resolution.
Okay. Okay. So do you want to modify, read amended recommendation?
I think at this point, maybe a recommendation isn't really necessary. I think, you know, we know where, probably it's time for a motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Three, two. Okay.
And this action is final unless appealed to the board supervisors within 15 calendar days.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Could I make, I know we're out of public comments, but I'd like to make one quick comment to your notations that it's a full service. There's not any of them up there that are full service.
Okay.
You'd need to visit each other.
I'm going to have to ask you to talk to him after the fact. Thank you.
That's fine. Good enough. I just wanted to know.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. So there are no action items, informational items, study session, none, none, none. Are there any commissioner reports?
No, not for me.
Okay. Are there any planning director reports?
No, I do not.
Okay. Then seeing none, we will move to adjournment, and thank you all for being here today.
And then there will be no meeting on the Fourth Thursday. It will be planning, or Thanksgiving, so everyone have a great Thanksgiving.
We're not coming here Thanksgiving Day?
Well, you're welcome to, but I...
I was planning popluck, man!
You will need your own key. And our next meeting will be the Second Thursday of December.
Okay, thank you.